You know, I just realized too that I thought that Kate was gonna be with us tonight. Is that what you thought too, Miranda from the DDA?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Do you want me to send her a message?
Yeah, would you please? Oh, who's that calling in?
That might be Dawn. Is that Dawn? Is that you? Sometimes she calls in. Who's on the phone? Who just called in?
Hi, this is Amanda with the Boulder County Co-Responder Team. Sorry to call and I couldn't get the web link to work.
No, I'm glad you're here. I'm just gonna change it from call and user to your name.
Sounds great.
Thanks for joining us.
I'd say let's, let's get this started. Six oh five. I think the early slides at least are fairly self-explanatory. So when Eric gets here, it won't be too much of a problem.
All right, let's do this. Well, glad to have you all for the second work session. We'll go ahead and get to our meeting objectives. So today, there it is a bit of a recap for Mayor Proton Baumhofer and Trustee Taylor, who were with us at the last meeting, but just wanted to go over a few things again, mainly being the examination of the tax revenue, five-year trend. Rita will then do a review of the fund balance and reserve funds, as well as revenue and expenditures by funds. We'd like to just briefly discuss the capital improvement priorities, which we did outline in the last presentation. Why don't you just talk to you a little bit about salaries and the desire to do a compensation study next year? Talk through some possible new positions, oh, sorry. Talk through some new positions that the board could consider using the fund balance and some of those, since we are in a good financial place, some possible options. And then just have open session to talk through any questions, comments, feedback. We'd love, would love your questions as we go. So please feel free to jump in if something comes to mind as we head through these slides. But I'll go ahead and turn it over to Rita.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, trustees, and anyone else who's with us tonight. We'll talk about next slide. Let's go ahead, Miranda, to the sales tax slide, please. Great, thank you. So we have received one more month of sales tax revenue since we met last, which now puts us at 20% above where we were at last year. So we are recommending an increase in sales tax revenue of 6% over the 2020 actuals for our 2022 budget. We would like to discuss still the potential creation of a CIP fund. We could, couple of options there, we could use, for example, 5% of additional sales tax revenue over the 2020 actuals to set up that fund in 2022, or consider establishing a CIP fund in 2021 from excess revenue. As an example, my, the August financials that were presented a couple weeks ago, for example, there we had in the general fund excess revenue of 118,000. So that's just kind of a couple of thoughts or ideas of how we could go about potentially creating a CIP fund. Any questions or comments before I move on? Okay, if not, let's go ahead and we'll talk about the property taxes. So the estimated revenue for property taxes for 2022 is $614,845, which is almost a 20% increase compared to 2021, or an increase of $102,000, which is pretty amazing. Any questions about this slide?
Yeah, have you determined exactly where that came from? Is that just in general, we're seeing more folks using local businesses as a result of the pandemic? Or are we specifically seeing that out of our restaurants?
I didn't hear the last part.
I was curious if we were seeing that specifically coming out of a few businesses and a few restaurants.
You mean the sales taxes?
The breakdown, right. So property taxes, obviously, we all know that property values have gone up, right? So, um, yes, I do not know the exact breakdown of that amount, though.
Okay.
That is a document we receive in August from Boulder County.
And so we can just generally look at the overall trends, but we have no ability to really track where it's coming from.
That is correct.
Thank you.
I have a question. This is Tanya about property taxes. And I have two questions. One, I was noticing how commercial properties seem to be taxed at a much, much, much higher rate than residential property in Netherland. Is that, is there like an extra town charge on properties that are commercial, or is that just how Boulder County does it?
You know, that's, I am not sure about that.
Where can I find that out?
I would have to research that and get back to you.
That would be great. I just am so curious. I was just looking at some of the properties and I was like, holy cow, they're paying $22,000 a year in property, you know, tax.
I think that's why.
Yeah. Ask them. Okay, so my other question is about the mill levy. So we charge 17% or we get 17% of the total property tax that's charged to people?
So what it is, um, you use the assessed value of the 35,593,665. You multiply that times the 17.274 and divided by 1,000. That is how the property tax is calculated.
I bet that's the mill levy, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And and, um, what funds, what does the mill levy fund in town? We have several things it funds, right?
So the property taxes, they, um, that revenue that just goes into the general fund.
Right.
And then from the general fund, obviously, you will see here when we start looking at the different slides in the general fund, um, what those are used for.
Okay, so the mill levies, everything except that isn't the general fund. That's what's funded by the mill levy?
Is in the general fund.
Goes into the general fund.
Yes, ma'am.
Wait, I know I'm confused. So the mill levy is, the mill levy is like an extra thing onto the property tax specifically for people who live in town in Netherland. And I'm wondering, I know it funds, um, things like, what, the library and things like that, and the DDA? And I was just curious, what else does it fund? And am I wrong? Isn't it like an extra charge? Isn't that what the mill levy is?
The 17, the 17 in the mill levy is the town of Netherland cut of the mill levy. And the DDA would be on top of that. The library would be on top of it. 17 is what?
Where can I find the information as to what the mill levy funds, all the different programs? Is that somewhere in a town file?
On the screen goes into the general fund and funds everything in town.
That is correct.
Yes, this goes into the general fund, so it funds police, it funds the community center, whatever.
All right, so the mill levy just funds everything. Got it.
So Trustee Corvall, what was the other question you had?
I guess I need to call the county assessor's office to find out why commercial properties are charged so much more.
The commercial.
Trustee Corvall, we could do that on your behalf if you'd like, unless you want to have that conversation with them directly.
I'm just curious. I just can't believe the amount that our businesses are paying in property tax.
Yeah, I think, well, I'm happy. I think we can definitely reach out and get that information.
Thanks. And I guess I'm still a little confused about the mill levy, so I'll just try and research that on my own at some point.
Any other questions? Okay, let's go to the next slide, Miranda. I just briefly want to talk about our government funds and the proprietary funds. So the government funds, they include the general fund, the community center, and the non-major funds are principally supported by taxes and intergovernmental revenues. The non-major funds include the Conservation Trust Fund and the Street Fund. The general fund balance includes funds that are reserved as follows. 110,000 from BCHA for Tunxton Village Development in lieu of dedication of land for public use, and $36,500 from the parking lease with Eldora, which was approved by the BOT so funds could be raised to be used for park improvements. So these reserved funds, they are held in a separate bank account. So we have about $147,000 right here that we will not spend unless the board provides direction on how to spend these funds. Next slide. The proprietary funds, the town of Netherland maintains two of them. One of them is the water and the other one is the sewer fund. They are financed and operated in a manner similar to a private business enterprise. They are not your typical government-funded by taxes type of programs and services. The idea is to pay for services provided through fees, which hasn't happened really, and we're having to use tax dollars and also have had substantial amount of grants as well as loans. The net position for the sewer and water fund include reserves as follows. We have $250,000 for sewer infrastructure improvements and expansion, and $635,000 for water infrastructure improvements and expansion. I will talk a little bit more when we get to the water and sewer budget about these reserve funds as well.
Rita, could I just ask a clarifying question on the last slide? You said there was still the $36,500 from the Eldora parking lease agreement in our general fund. Was that not earmarked and used to match the GOCO grant that is currently rebuilding Gersio Field and Barker Meadow?
Not to my law, not to my knowledge.
Grant was funded, we only use in-kind as our match. And then we did not end up putting in the Eldora funds when we were asked, when we didn't get the first round of funding. There was 350,000 and we dropped it down to 180. We were able to do the match entirely with in-kind.
Okay, is that money not still earmarked specifically for improvements to Gersio Field? As when that lease was originally agreed to, that was the agreement that the BOT had voted for at that time. So I would question whether or not that is still looking for BOT direction because the vote that night on public record earmarked.
So I think yes, and I know ProSAB was going to discuss it at one of their future meetings, both that and the Tunxton Village funds. I know it is a desire to then also, of course, bring that back to the Board of Trustees, but Trustee Kums Ismael, I think that the goal was in the next ProSAB meeting of their next month or the following, we were gonna start talking about those funds, correct?
Yeah, I think so. And I think the other thing that we've been talking about is, you know, if we do end up, things change if we end up funding a parks manager position because we want to be able to have a budget for them to use to do that work. So it feels like it's kind of in flux right now, how those funds exactly are going to be used. But we did hope they were going to be used for parks. And it it was in fact earmarked for Gersio Field, and that sounds fine to, to me, but.
I mean, yeah, I would be concerned with the language being changed. I'm sorry to interrupt that, but that was a really big deal. That, that lease and that ruffled a lot of feathers and it was able to be stomached by this community because it was specifically earmarked for the development of that area. So I have some serious concerns with that BOT vote changing as a result of current ProSAB discussions.
No, I think that's fair enough. And, but, you know, there's, there's obviously other improvements that ProSAB wanted to make to the Barker Meadows project that we didn't get to do because we didn't, we didn't get that first round of GOCO funding. So we still want to make those improvements. It's just now there's going to be, it's going to be a different way of doing it, not through that GOCO grant anymore.
Okay. Alan, I have a question. Excuse me. We're anticipating dead guy days going forward. ProSAB voted for that. And we're anticipating that field getting trashed again, as it usually does from dead guy days. Do we have an estimate of what it's going to cost to restore it after they use it for their festivities? And will 35,000 cover that restoration?
Frozen dead guy days, Trustee App was actually charged a higher deposit of, oh, Trustee Kums Ismael, I think it's 13,250. And the reason they were charged that excess was to cover damages to the field. And so, yes, of course, there's the 30,000, but we would be looking to take that deposit. Hopefully not, but if we had to, that's what that deposit is specifically for, to cover reseeding and either staff time or contracted out work to, to address the field.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, next slide, please. So before I start with general fund, just a couple of comments. You will see an approximate 6% increase in operating budget across the board. For salaries, we budgeted 2% COLA and up to 4% in merit increases. We provide a comparative budgeted numbers between 2021 and 2022. It is important as well to look at 2020 actuals, 2020 actuals, excuse me, when reviewing these spreadsheets. Highlighting green, you'll see the 2022 budget and 2022 actuals for the change in net assets and 2022 change in net assets is highlighted in yellow. Okay, now I'll talk about the general fund. So in 2020, the town budgeted a decrease in the fund balance of $60,490. And the actual shows an increase of $229,000. So a total increase of $290,000. That is such an amazing accomplishment during the pandemic year. And I wanted to give a shout out to all the department heads who had to work with contingency budget for pretty much most of 2020. As far as the operating budget goes, we are operating in the black in 2022 and are projecting an increase of $47,786. The capital improvements of, let's see, $62,481 include 31,571 for the plow payment, $10,910 for the PD vehicle lease, $10,000 for body cameras and tasers, and $10,000 for an electrical vehicle for public works, which the total cost for that is $40,000 and that will be shared with the street. Um, a couple of additional improvement improvements are the MIP, Master Infrastructure Plan for 22,500, and $26,000 for the old chop well construction, which are listed under a separate line item. They are not part of this capital improvement total. And you also will see a separate CIP slide that lists all these capital improvements we will be talking about to each fund. Any questions on the general fund? Okay, let's go to the next slide. Next slide, thank you. So the community center is operating in the black as well. We are projecting a fund balance increase of $8,200. As discussed during our last budget meeting, we did remove the $7,500 we had originally in here for the Stone Garage project. We had postponed that until 2023 for now. Any questions on the community center budget? Next slide, please. So the water fund, in 2020, we budgeted a decrease of $62,000 and actual came out to be $215,000, which is an overall increase to the fund balance of $277,000. In 2022, we are operating in the black. We are projecting an increase of $13,483. Um, in the capital improvements of $263,000, that includes 144,000 for the raw water pond repairs, 100,000 for caribou generator, 15,000 for hydrant replacements, and $4,000 for, I don't know how you say that word, turbidometer replacement. So here is where I wanted to explain about the PIF fees. So if you look under other sources of cash, second line item down is PIF fees. If you look at 2020 budget, we budgeted $37,000. Actuals received for PIF fees was $197,150. The difference between those two of $160,150 was put in reserves. So the way that works is we budget for PIF. Anything that comes in above PIF will, will get to put into the reserve fund. So that's just part of that slide when I was talking about what is in the reserve fund for the water fund. That's where these dollar amounts come from. Let's see. That is it for this slide. Any questions on the water fund? Okay. Moving on to the sewer fund. So when looking at the operating budget, we are operating in the black. We are at $61,000. Once you add in your other sources of cash in the amount of $382,900, and the other expenditures for debt service and capital improvement, that ends up in a decrease in the fund balance of $97,000. First, I want to talk about the capital improvements for the $245,000. That is 180,000 for grit removal, 5,000 for manhole repairs, 50,000 for INI repairs, which we did change that. It was set at 10,000, but when talking this through during our last budget session, we decided to increase that to $50,000 and $10,000 for security locks at the wastewater plant. We also have, excuse me?
Is this the same chart as the, as the water fund?
Nope.
Okay.
It was, ma'am, Larson, that was, um, the first, um.
No, I think actually Rita, I might be showing the old. I thought I pulled up the new one, but I might be showing the old one. Hold on, give me one second.
The 13,000 looked exactly the same.
Oh, that's the one I resent on Sunday night because I caught the error.
Sorry, I accidentally was showing the wrong one. So give me one.
Well, I have, yeah, I have my notes on my own computer, so I didn't even catch that.
Close. The old one, start again.
Oh, okay. Okay, I better start over then, huh?
Well, isn't the one that you sent us in the package just two water funds? And not, we don't have the copy of that sewer? It all is falling along on the attachment.
So the newest attachment I sent you last night is, and the one that Rita had sent you, is, is the correct one, but then the updated packet I sent last night is also the correct one. But what's on the screen now, too? Sorry about that, Rita, is the correct one.
That's okay. So should I start over? Because everything really stayed. Well, no, I should start over. Because if you were looking at the old one, that is, that was like the water fund. So, okay, so back, I'm going to start over. So looking at the operating budget, we are operating in the black at $61,000. And again, as we add our sources of cash in the amount of 382,900 and other expenditures for debt service and the capital improvement, that ends up in a decrease in fund balance of 97,000. The capital improvements of $245,000 include 180,000 for grit removal, $5,000 for manhole repairs, $50,000 for INI repairs, and 10,000 for security locks at the wastewater plant. Um, we also have $25,000 for a grease interceptor policy, which is in a different account, in a different line item called planning. So it's not part of the capital improvements amount. Let's see, um. We are prepared to use reserve funds to balance the budget for 2022. So, um, really, again, if we look at the PIF fees here under other sources of cash, for 2020, we had budgeted 50,000. An actual received was $58,000. So the difference between the two did go into the reserve fund. Let's see, I think that is it for the sewer fund. Any questions on the sewer fund?
Yeah, this is Trustee Danforth. Um, I was just looking for the kind of sources of cash. And we've committed some of our rescue funds to the grit removal. So I was just wondering where those are shown, where that might be shown as an incoming cash flow.
So the, the 192,000 that had come in on, under, um, that was under, is under the general fund. And remember, that's 2021 actual. So you won't be seeing that on, on this slide. But it did come in and we are committing, obviously, um, 100, well, we're hoping to get 120,000 from DOLA. And then, yes, you are correct, we would use $100,000 from ARPA funds. So that is under the general fund. And if we go, let's see.
But you mentioned that in the capital improvements on the sewer, we budget, you mentioned 180,000 for the grit removal, right?
That's correct. So, yes.
180 from, from the sewer fund, plus 100 from the ARP, which comes from the general fund in 2021.
That's right, exactly. Does that make sense, Trustee Danforth?
Fine, accounting is confusing to me, obviously, because you're like taking from different places that's never shown on the same sheet.
Right, correct.
So that negative, that negative number, a reduction of 97,000 in our net change in assets, that actually wouldn't happen once we move those funds from the general fund in to pay for the grit removal, right? Like that would kind of wipe that out, right?
That is, that is not, that is not correct because all I'm allocating for in the sewer fund is the 180,000. So this is, if you look at the capital improvements, obviously, those have increased by 130,000. So that is because of, you know, bigger projects that we're planning on doing in 2022 in the sewer fund. However, like I said, we are prepared to, you know, I mean, if you look, you know, at 2020 actuals, we were only decreased 10,000. Um, we might, you know, may or may not have a decrease in our balance in 2022. And like I said, if need be, we would, um, be ready to grab from the reserves for the sewer fund. I'm trying to see, let me go back. I'm going to go back to the general fund to see if that's, see it's brands. Um, in the general fund and the grants revenue and grants expenditure, that 192,000 that we know that we're going to receive in 2022 is included. It's not separated out. You will see that, however, when we send you the detailed information. So maybe that will make it a little easier for you.
Okay. And then, then later we would see that funds come in to the sewer fund balance sheet, right? So later on, we'll see it.
It won't be in the sewer fund. It'll still be over. So let me explain this to you. When I do the entry, um, or when I make that payment and I will book or I will charge, let's just say 180,000 to the sewer fund. I will book 100,000 to the general fund to the, um, ARPA grant. And then depending if we receive the 120,000 from DOLA, that will also be part of this.
Okay.
So that American Rescue, the $100,000 will never actually goes through the sewer fund. We're building the grit removal with $100,000 from the general fund paid for by ARP, 180, whatever it was, from the, the sewer fund in the capital improvements line, plus hopefully money from DOLA.
That is correct.
So it's costing like half a million dollars? Ish?
Well, the grit removal breakdown, the grit removal, uh, the total cost, the estimate is 400,000. Correct?
Right. That makes sense. I got it.
Okay. Any other questions before we move on? Next slide, please, Miranda. For the street fund, this is a pretty straightforward fund. It's got a great fund balance. Um, we are projecting a decrease of $7,000, which we will use the fund balance to, um, cover that in capital expenditures of the 50,000. That includes obviously the other share of, as I had mentioned earlier, for the electric vehicle, total cost was 40,000. Public Works will, uh, will cover 10,000. And the street fund plans on using $30,000. And the other $20,000 is to re-surface the school road. Um, just as an informational item, it does show a decrease of $7,000 for the 2022 budget. However, as of August 2021 financials, we are showing an increase in fund balance of $31,000. And if you look at what we have budgeted for 2021, we have budgeted a decrease of $6,289. So that's really, you know, pretty straightforward. Any questions on the street fund? Okay, conservation trust fund. The conservation trust fund is quite regulator on how we can spend the funds. So these funds obviously are to be used for park and trails improvements. And, uh, what we did do here, we increased the expenditures for 2022 to include the unused fund balance from 2020. So in other words, we are expecting $16,000 of revenue to come in. And what I did is I included the 13,792 that was, uh, the fund ending balance and the, at the end of 2020 in the expenditures column. So we do have $29,000 additional available for parks and trails improvements and maintenance, which then would zero out the fund ending balance for this fund. Any questions? Okay, next slide, please. So the health and human services fund, what Miranda and I did, we are projecting $10,000 of revenue for 2022. And we split that up 90-10 between the health and human services and law enforcement expenditures. Um, we did for 2021 predict $6,000 of revenue. And again, as of August financials, we have received $6,200. And really, that's it for this fund. Any questions on that? Okay. And I was hoping, I don't see anybody from the DDA. I wonder if Kate forgot to see her. She is?
Yep.
I don't see her.
I am here.
All right, good. I'm going to go ahead and introduce the, the downtown development's budget for you guys tonight. And then, Kate, if they, if anyone has any questions, I'm sure she'll be able to answer them. So the DDA's operating budget is similar to last year. So the capital improvement looked like a lot. Reality though is when you look at the 2020 budgeted amount, just a little bit over 500,000, the actual amount spent was actually 231,646. So let's see where my So the 2020 budgeted internet asset shows a decrease of 229,500. And the actuals, however, shows an increase of 349,880, an overall increase of $579,000. So again, it does, you know, show like it's really high, these, um, projects that they're planning on doing. And just because you might approve the budget, the process really hasn't changed. They would still come before you with any PIF projects and presented as an informational item and explain to you what they are hoping to accomplish with PIF funds. And next they would bring a resolution to you and you would then approve that. In the DDA's projected 515,482 capital, that some of the bigger items included in that are 25,000 for beautification, 150,000 for wayfinding, 265,000 for Big Springs parking, 30,000 for the NFPD, 10,000 for event support, and 10,000 for public art master plan and projects, and also $20,000 for traffic safety support.
I feel like I'm not seeing what you're talking about. Are we on the wrong? Where?
What I was just doing, um, I was explaining the capital that they are planning for 2022.
Why isn't that broken down? Like, I feel like that each, those things should be broken down specifically. You said it so fast. I don't, I couldn't hear you. You say 150,000 for wayfinding?
I said 150,000 for wayfinding. So we will, at the next meeting, you will have a breakdown of what all this entails. I was just reading them out. Do you write right now what entails the 515, 482? What's included in that?
Okay, I just, yeah, you'll have it. It seems like it should just be broken down first, first place, but thank you.
Would you like me to repeat what that is?
Yes, I would.
I can talk slow.
For where you were. I wasn't listening, yeah.
Are you seeing where, uh, the capital is for 515,000 for 82 grit? So that is 25,000 for beautification, 150,000 for wayfinding, 265,000 for Big Springs parking, 30,000 for the NFPD, for the mid fire protection department, 10,000 for event support, 10,000 for public art master plan and projects, and 20,000 for traffic safety support.
Okay, thank you for repeating that.
Oh, you're welcome. Sorry.
I have a follow-up question on that one, Rita. The first item you mentioned was 25K for downtown beautification, but that actually is a line item.
So, yeah, we talked, we talked about this last year and it is confusing. So what it was, and it no longer shows. So 2018 and prior, I think, it used to be a, um, um, an operating item. It used to come out of the operating budget. So therefore that item is still listed there because it did have dollar amounts in there at one point. The beautification is now part of the capital, um, amount.
Okay, but it, yeah, that, that makes sense. But I'm just curious, why do we have sidewalk maintenance, downtown beautification, fireworks, administrative allocation, these line items that actually don't have anything in them? And they haven't for several years.
Actually, they do prior. So, you know, I have this, and, and I, I can work on that. That is a huge Excel spreadsheet, right? That goes over several years.
Okay, so it's just that it goes back far enough that it exists, but we're just haven't done it in a couple of years. So it's just kind of
Oh, yeah. And if I delete that item, what happens is of course, as you can see, those fun beginning and ending balances, they're all formulas. It would mess them up.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to be clear why, you know, if these are things are being discussed, it might be added to the budget or
And I wonder if maybe I can just clear them. I wonder if I can just clear them and they would not affect my fund value, which would show nothing there. But that might be better to not even have, I mean, it would still be a line item, but it would just show blank. And it would not show sidewalk maintenance, downtown beautification. That might a little, be a little better, I think. If I can do that.
I was just a question. That's, that you, you answered mine. So thank you.
Okay. Any questions that you have or maybe for Kate? Kate, um, is, did I say everything okay here?
You did.
Good.
So just the bottom line, is it the minus 164,000?
Yes. What happens is, um, you know, they have PIF revenue coming in of $350,000 and obviously are planning or wanting to do projects for $515,000. So that will, um, show a decrease in their fund balance of 164,500. So they will use their fund balance to, um, balance the budget.
I do, I do have a question about that. That, that fund balance. Now what, I guess, it'd be confusing because isn't the fund balance for projects that have already been approved? So how could they use the fund balance to make up for new projects that would decrease it?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Like, I, I guess I don't understand why they have a fund balance to use to offset projects that they plan on doing next year if the amount that's in their funds right now was already allocated for projects that are
Is it because they underspent this year by 300,000, Rita?
Say that again.
Is it because they underspent this year by a certain, you know, was it?
So what it might help is if we look at 2020 again, let's look at fund beginning balance of 2020. So it was 628,457. They increased 349, so left them with a balance of 978. So in 2020, they had, um, projected to do $525,000 worth of, um, projects. Am I right? Hold on a second. I'm sorry. They projected to do 500, yes, $520,000 of worth of project, but they only did 231,000 worth of projects. So I guess the fund balance back in 2020 at 978 only includes 231,000 of the project that they had approved of the 520. Does that help, trustee Conklin?
Right. But it, I guess, I guess what's confusing is how could they use that money to make up for other projects deficits? Uh, when, when it was allocated for a specific project, even though they didn't do it, even though they didn't do the project or spend the money that as they intended to, uh, it seems like you can't use that money to make up for a deficit in 2022 if it was meant to be spent on a specific project in 2020. I guess that's my question.
Boy. I'm just not sure if I look at, I, I just have to go back to the fund balance again in 2020 of 978. And that gets brought forward to 21, right? In 21, same thing, you know, they have projects scheduled for 480,000.
Gotcha. So
It's a constant, the balance keeps, the fund balance keeps being brought forward.
Right. Yeah, it keeps on being brought forward. I guess what I'm hoping to see, I guess, from the DDA then is that, uh, the projects that are, that are making up that $515,000 in, in the 2022 budget are, are the projects that were approved years ago, uh, that were, that were finally completed.
In my opinion, I, I believe that is incorrect. Like I had said, all these budgets that they're talking about in 2022 that I had listed, that, the, the way that would work, they would still have to come before the board whenever they are ready to do any of these projects.
Sure. So they're all new projects in 2022 that we're talking about.
Yes. There, there's one, I didn't mention it. It was, as you can see, if you look at capital is 515, 482. And if you go to, um, the debt services, 510,000, the difference between the two is the $5,482, which that was remaining from a resolution back in 2020 for website, um, which the total was 7,500 and they did not use it all. So they are, uh, planning on using that in 2022. That's why the 5,482.
I see.
So all the other projects, yes, they would have to come before you in 2022, uh, for approval.
Got it. Uh, I, I mean, I guess, I, I don't know if this is a question, but I just want to throw, throw it out there. So I don't, almost for myself to not forget how this is working, that it does seem odd that these fund balances that are for specific projects, if they don't spend as much as they anticipated on that project, that now they can be carried over to the next year rather than just go back to repaying the TIF, I guess.
Instead of going what? I didn't understand it. Instead of going back to where?
I guess instead of just going back to repaying the TIF financing.
So what this is, so the bottom portion is your TIF, right? Really, the way our auditor does this when they do the financials, they actually combine these two. It, to me, it's also a little confusing when you have the fund beginning balance and ending balance for non-TIF. And then you have it for the TIF. It truly should, in my opinion, should be a combined. So when we look at 2022, the really combined fund ending balance is going to be the 595, 591, less the 57, so roughly $540,000. And that is a combined, that is your TIF funds, okay, as well as their, um, operating fund.
So that, okay, the fund that we're looking at the bottom, at 5, 595, 591, that is both operating and TIF together.
That is not. It is actually just the TIF. What I was saying, for us to get, um, a combined, uh, balance, it's 595, 591, less the 57,000 from the non-TIF.
Got it.
Okay. So really, what I was getting at is as far as funds, you know, the, the funds are not going anywhere, right? The 978 gets brought forward and then it ends up at 760, I think it is in 2021. So that always gets carried forward. So if they don't use, let's just say for 2022, if they do not use the 510,000, it just will increase their fund balance come the end of 2020.
Right.
Okay. Because right now we're predicting, right, we're predicting a decrease of 164,000. Because now we're predicting, right, we're predicting a decrease of one hundred and sixty four thousand. That's like in twenty twenty. They predicted a decrease of two hundred and twenty nine, but what ac- actually happened was they increased it by three hundred and forty nine thousand dollars. Therefore, look at the difference in fund ending balance between the twenty twenty budget and the twenty twenty actuals. It's huge. Huge difference. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it 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 makes sense. It's it's just, it makes for some, for some strange reading on on this.
And you know, I'm I'm not sure I'm, if I like the way this might be to set up and, you know, I've been thinking about a little bit of how I could make that a little easier to read, but haven't had enough time to do that, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I think that's it for me for the DDA, unless Kate, you have any additional comments?
No, thank you. You're wonderful to work with, get this done.
Thank you. All right, I think you're up, Miranda.
Okay, thanks Rita. So we wanted to just talk um, some of the CIP projects. Um, obviously Rita outlined them a little bit, but provide an opportunity for the rest of the board to talk through these. We had really great discussions with Mayor Pro Tem Baumhofer and Trustee Taylor. So I'll just do a kind of a recap of this slide and then um, Chris Pelletier and Jen Landon are on. I'd love to turn over the next slide to them since those are their respective projects. Uh, so first is Community Center. We are looking to do a lighting replacement, uh, but we are actually going to seek twenty twenty one funds to do that, namely being the fund set aside for the um, Stone Garage. At this time, the lighting is the the priority. So using a combination of those funds and um, some funds that they already have available in their budget to come up with that thirteen thousand. So you'll see that come before the board on October fifth, asking for that formal permission to use the Stone Garage for lighting replacement. But I also know Don's on. And so, Don, is there anything else you wanted to add for this capital improvement priority? You may have to press star six. I'll just keep moving on for the moment. But are there any questions about that? Okay, planning and zoning. So uh, for those of you who don't know, currently Cynthia, uh, she was using the annex as her place of work. But because we've identified mold and mushrooms, and an industrial hygienist has uh, designated the building as one that should not be occupied until remediated. Cynthia is currently working kind of a combination from home and then sharing offices when she does come to the office. Uh, it would be ideal to be able to bring her back, but we need to treat the annex. So we are looking at potentially upwards to twenty thousand dollars to remediate. Mayor Pro Tem Baumhofer had asked us to look into how much it may cost just to demolish that building and rebuild it. Unfortunately, I did not get any cost estimates in time for tonight's meeting, but that's something we're still looking into. And I'll keep the board uh, apprised of as we move forward in that uh, that kind of cost finding. But are there questions about that building and what needs to be done there? Okay. Um, last one is body cameras. So the police department needs to have body cameras. The Board of Trustees in your consent agenda, you did sign off on the Motorola um, contract, which spans over five years. It's a little over four thousand dollars a year. The great thing about that is that allows us to also get replacement uh, tasers at year like two and a half, three. So body cameras will be half of this ten thousand and then replacing tasers, which are very important um, for that less lethal uh, defense. Uh, it's, we have to replace those because currently the cartridges we use for ours are no longer uh, supported. So we need to move to starting to acquire new tasers. Are there questions about that? Okay. So Chris and Jen, we did go over this with Mayor Pro Tem Baumhofer and Trustee Taylor last time. But if you wanted to kind of speak to any of these projects, I would love to ta- turn it over to you since you're more of experts than me.
Better plan. Um, it's just continuing the update um, on the streets portion of that plan. Um, and so we have a proposal from JBA to they highlighted a couple of areas that are are lacking in that plan. And the last time that plan was done, we didn't have the streets fund. So um, the streets fund will help um, with planning. The old shop well construction, um, I think most of you know about this, but the Old Town Shop um, has to go through a phase two assessment. And um, the final piece of that assessment is drilling some some wells to be able to monitor the groundwater. Um, and that should be is to assess over there. And then um, the electric vehicle, forty thousand. Um, I also have a a um, a grant that can take advantage of um, for likely six thousand. Um, and um, and I'm in the process of an assessment on our current public works vehicles, all of them, even the utilities. Um, they're being monitored through a program run by Excel and um, they'll uh, monitor the miles per day, where they park. Um, their average uses and um, and spare us data for us that we can find a vehicle that uh, best is best suited for. And in the street side particularly, our vehicles are pretty um, and I can let Jen talk about the utilities if she wants.
Uh, thank you, Chris. Uh, the INI repairs are to repair water infiltration into our collection system piping. Uh, we have been working on this for, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, over five years. The grease interceptor policy i- is so that we can have um, better control over pre-treatment. Uh, grit removal for a hundred thousand dollars um, will help us greatly to uh, protect our equipment at the wastewater treatment facility uh, and remove that grit before it damages the existing equipment. Um, the manhole repairs for five thousand dollars is again for uh, water infiltration, um, just like the INI. Uh, security locks at the wastewater plant uh, is just to increase the increase the security. We we do not have the highest uh, quality locks to protect um, from lock picking uh, for the water plant uh, in the water utilities. Uh, raw water for a hundred and forty four thousand dollars will be uh, to line the ponds um, and eliminate uh, water from uh, soaking down into the ground. Uh, replacing the caribou generator. Um, it's kind of old and unreliable. Uh, we've been putting quite a bit of money into it trying to repair it. Uh, fire hydrant replacement. Uh, that's a typical line item, just to kind of update our aging infrastructure. And then the turbidity meter replacement at the water plant uh, is to to upgrade uh, an existing older turbidity meter um, with a newer one.
Thanks, Jen and Chris. Are there any questions about these?
Yeah, this is Trustee Taylor. Um, we talked about this last time, and I've been thinking about this, and the more I think about this, the more confused I become. So the Caribou Generator is basically the town of Netherlands providing uninterruptible power and water to one neighborhood. I would really like to fully understand how the town of Netherlands assumed that responsibility for that one neighborhood. And whether that is actually a serious requirement or something that could be put on the neighborhood to handle. So I I would like to see, I would kind of like to see, if I could, some documentation on how we got into this spot and why we're doing it and what our legal obligations are regarding that caribou generator. So I I think before, I'd feel comfortable voting on that particular expenditure. I mean, on, you know, giving the go ahead on that. I I would really like to see if we even have to do that. Do are there any thoughts on that, Miranda or Chris?
Um, yeah, sure.
I just want, I just want to note that Chris and I have corresponded on this, and I have received good information from Chris, but um,
Just for some clarification.
New news for him.
Which neighborhood is this? Because Beaver isn't part of Ned, is it?
It's the Caribou subdivision above the elementary school.
Yeah.
Oh, that's part of that. That's old. Yeah, okay.
We have a development agreement um, uh, with that subdivision. It's it's an old one, it's been updated um, over time. And um, I think we're two years into the um, the most recent development agreement, which includes that pump station. But beyond just that, I mean, it is needed for distribution pressures, which is a um, a requirement of CDPHE to maintain pressure, then also for fire.
You mean, you mean water pressure?
Water pressure. And um, for fire protections. It's not just maintaining their um, their house pressure. However, you know, the distribution system is required to maintain a certain pressure in in houses. But you know, it's also for fires.
Mm hmm. And and but it's not just for water. It's also providing electricity to the homes. Is it, am I, am I remembering that correctly?
No, it's just, uh, it's just for the pumps. That's it.
Just water pressure.
Pretty much all have their own generators, Julian.
Okay.
That kicked on today. Um, that's on the homeowners. It's more the town's infrastructure that runs off that generator. So it's the
I see. Okay, I misunderstood then. I'm very glad I asked that question. Um, so this is the town saying, look, we couldn't get a water pipe to you. Uh, so instead, we're going to use a well. And in order to get a well to work, we're going to need a pump. And in order to keep the pump working, even when the power is out, we've got to have a generator.
Um, e- e- essentially, but but no well, uh, it is coming from a tank. It's just not elevated enough to provide the the pressure.
Okay. Okay.
And but I do think, Julian, you keyed in on something, which is there's some things to be renegotiated with that development contract. And I think they will be coming back before. And at one time, you know, there was a requirement as part of that development contract for that company to pave the road from the end of School Road up there. And I think that was dropped at one point. Um, and some of the homeowners themselves up there wonder why the town let the company get away with that. So there are some things that are worthwhile for us to note and to kind of bring back to the table if they choose to come before us to renegotiate that.
Is is that, is that company still in business?
Yes, they are.
Right, okay.
Yeah. So it's that, it sounds to me like a generator of some some kind is needed.
You're cutting out. Is it just me?
We'll see what happens. You hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, good. Oh, at least one person could hear me.
I hear you now.
Okay, there's obviously a problem, but I I will say the generator is necessary. Um, and in in actuality, it's not on that often, just when there's power outages and um, and so like today, need to be on, and it's very loud. It's an old generator. Now, there may be a possibility to work with the um, to the subdivision or the developers to help absorb some of the costs, because we are under a warranty period with um, with the developers right now. Um, so I can look into that further.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see why they they wouldn't want to contribute to that. Can I ask you a question about the old shop well?
Yes.
Now, is that the location you guys want to put the food pantry on? Or is that somewhere else?
Yes, that's the location.
Why are you building a well there? To check the water quality?
Yeah, the ground, it has some contaminants in it. And um, and in order to assess whether those contaminants are getting into the groundwater, um, we have to uh, put some wells in, some monitoring wells, and test the water to see if the groundwater is being contaminated.
Interesting, okay.
These are monitoring wells, not extraction wells.
Right, okay.
It just helps to inform the extent to clean up.
Okay.
Chris, wasn't that also part of the requirements um, by the Army Corps of Engineer? When that was designated as a brownfield site, should we ever choose to develop it in any way, shape or form?
It's a requirement, really just from the state that it has to be cleaned up before it can be developed.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that.
Any other questions for Chris and Jen?
I'll also add that, you know, I do have a goal of paving School Road next year too. It's not on this list, but um, that's a a big, big project for us.
Um, wouldn't that be an opportunity for that subdivision to pay for that? The developer?
I believe they have to bring back the uh, the development agreement to be renegotiated to us. I believe the onus is on them to do that, and they may be currently waiting. Um, I don't have that information, but Miranda, maybe you could speak to that.
Um, yeah, so while I was gone, I did see an email come across to Attorney Madsen regarding this, and I was going to talk to her more about it tomorrow and then send an email to the board um, about what the timeframe looks like for that.
Yeah, in any case, School Road is not part of that subdivision.
And you guys will have practice because you did Big Spring, so.
Yeah, we're gaining skills.
This is Rita. I did want to point out under the utilities, water for, right now, it's listed that we'll be using PIFs reserves for this expense. However, if um, you know, our budget, if we operate in the black, just wanted you to obviously know, we would not be using PIF reserves. Same with um, that grit removal under sewer, um, even though it was approved by the board, but and obviously the sewer fund, we may end up needing it right now. That does show a decrease of ninety seven thousand, but just wanted to point out those two things.
Thanks, Rita. Okay, so I just wanted to recap kind of a conversation that we had last time about a desire to do a s- a compensation study. So this is just giving you an idea kind of of a really rolled up level of kind of where we stand by department. Um, obviously, some departments kind of are self generating revenue like utilities. Um, so I just think this is just more of of an FYI, not meant to be necessarily compared to one another, but just so you can kind of see what's happening here by by department. I think one of the big things, though, is just cost of living in Boulder County. So you do, you use a metric of a hundred, and as you can see in Boulder County, the cost of living is one forty one point seven. So of course, we're not shy of that by any means here in in Netherlands. And so when you look at, say, like a one bedroom in Boulder County, it's just shy of fifteen hundred dollars for a one bedroom. Currently, we have a resolution that all employees are to get to forty thousand dollars. Currently, we have a resolution that all employees are to get to forty thousand dollars um if you are a full time employee. That's depending on obviously how much is taken out in taxes though, could mean that you're spending seventy five percent or more on just your basic cost of living um with little additional room uh within your paycheck to, to support any of your other needs. So what I'm proposing is taking, and this is that resolution, I'll just skip over that really quick. What I'm proposing though is doing in twenty twenty two, a compensation study. Would allow us to really see where Netherlands stands in other similar, uh, not only within Boulder County, but other similar mountain communities when it comes to how we are paying our employees or like employees. Then from that information, um, look at maybe revising that resolution to mirror a more accurate minimum salary requirement. Example here is fifty thousand dollars over the next ten years. Uh, that would still put us behind the ball, but of course it's a movement in the right direction. Um, but coming back with that study so we could really revisit that resolution. And then I'd like to develop a classification and compensation plan that really structures how employees can move up the kind of in a compensation scale, you know, perhaps it's as they get certifications. They obtain X amount of payment or every year. And so we're able to really kind of balance out that pay. And people can see what their trajectory is for how they can, can acquire um more, more pay as they move forward with our, with, with town and their employment here. Um, it does seem that a lot of these compensation studies do actually exist already and it's just a matter of comparing and contrasting the data. I talked with Attorney Madsen, um, who recommended using the Colorado Municipal League and a couple other resources. So this is something that we may be able to do um in partnership with them, which would not cost us anything. So I am exploring that. Um, but just would love to hear board feedback about this compensation study and a possible classification and compensation plan. If you have any.
This is Chris and I think it's, yeah, it's time to do it again. You know, when we passed that resolution in twenty fifteen, uh, we did the study. We did our own research off of I believe I used the IP uh. At that point, it would be, the top four was closer to what it should be. And you know, obviously in the last six years, just the price of housing in the front range has gone through the roof and has reset the baseline of what it needs to be. So I think coming up with a new model, uh, like you said, using cell or other resources like that, and then reassessing what we need to be, you know, what that, that floor needs to be for for our employees. And I really like your idea of developing a, the compensation plan so the people have sight of where they go next. What happens if they stay town for five years and they move from a one, one play to a level three? What does that mean for their salary bands? Things like that. I think that's a great idea.
Uh, this is Eric. I also think this is a really good idea. I think if you, if you use that same MIT study now, you'll find that it's somewhere around fifty four thousand dollars a year is a living wage uh in, in Boulder County. And so the one concern that I have is that we, we base a ten year implementation plan off of data from this year, then in ten years, we will have employees who are making below a living wage. Like that will be the ultimate end goal. So I think we might want to be more forward thinking than that.
Just jump in here. I think I stated this last time and I'm all for a living wage, but I would also like to, to not only concentrate on the living wage, but also the skill sets involved in paying such a wage. Um, I believe that if we as a town are going to be compensating employees at this level, they must also then have the skill sets necessary for bringing in this pay so that we do not find ourselves in a position where we are while providing great jobs on able to provide the infrastructure and technical needs um as a community through our employees, if that makes sense.
So this will be just something I continue to update the board on. Um, and I was glad to hear of quite a few resources when I was at the Colorado Municipal League Conference this weekend. And so I think we've got a lot to pull from as we move forward.
I, I think it's a good idea as well. This is Alan. And um, hopefully once we get the uh minimum salary set, or the minimum sal reset for particular positions, the cost of living increases could be set to be more realistic. So we don't get caught way behind again.
Yeah.
That's what Jonathan said about skill sets. We want to make sure we're getting uh people with the appropriate skills respect, with respect to the salaries.
Yep. I think that's where the compensation plan will help quite a bit is to make sure that there is, there is a pay structure that is uh specific to uh what skills a person's bringing. Um, and then again, this was just an example, of course. You know, I do, I think we all agree that we don't want to be behind the ball. A ten thousand dollar increase for people currently sitting at forty is, it's going to take some time to get there. And so I think we'll have, the board will have to really assess, you know, how quickly if say that is the threshold, how quickly do you want to try to get there and what that path looks like for current employees?
So this is trustee Taylor. Uh, I, I'm noticing that the largest increase in costs comes from housing. And I'm almost wondering, and I think we discussed this last time, I'm almost wondering if we couldn't codify a formula that takes into account predictions of housing prices as a part of our um cost of living increases. That might keep us from being surprised with the next study. Just a thought. Most of the other stuff seemed to be fairly in line, but with housing being an amazing problem, perhaps we don't take just the standard cola. We also fold in some understanding of how uh housing prices are increasing. So that, that's a thought too, just to keep us from being surprised for, you know, ten years from now when we do another study.
Absolutely. Okay. Well, the next thing, oh, some, Tony, was that you?
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to say, yeah, of course I'm a, agreeance of all this. I mean, I don't even really think we need a study. I guess you just wanted to have it on, on paper to show people that the obvious, the cost of living is outweighing income and that housing is the driving that force. So I think I, it's, wouldn't be a bad idea for Netherlands to create its own housing for people too. That's just something to think about for the future, like the town, Netherlands.
Yeah, some workforce housing, yeah. Perfect. So kind of on the personnel, you know, with, with, obviously financially, we're in a great place this year and as we head into next year. Um, there was just some, some talk amongst different trustees and different advisory boards and commissions about some possible new positions. These are just a handful of, of recommendations or things for the boards to consider. This isn't by no means an exhaustive list, but just some things we've been talking about and, and as I run through them really quickly, I think really we're just looking for feedback from the board. If there's one that you prefer more than another, um, I would say it would be hard to maybe fund more than one or two, but if we could really narrow down the focus of if you're interested in any at all, which ones are they? So that I can work with Rita and we could kind of flush out how that might fit into the budget. So the first one is the Boulder County coresponders and we do have Amanda on the call here if there are questions. We've gone over this before. It is the behavioral health specialist who works side by side with our police department. It is a Boulder County program, so the salary range is set by them, um, which is at sixty three to sixty eight. This does not include their fringe benefits. One new piece I've added to these slides that was not in the last presentation was how could we possibly fund this? Um, you still have that American Rescue Plan funds, which could be used for that. Uh, we did go to Boulder County and ask them if they would consider using their sixty, I think it's sixty three million to fund this and we'll see how that pans out. And then there's also a grant opportunity, which is a historical one, which is a peace officer mental health grant. It's not currently open, but Janine does anticipate we should be able to see it hopefully in the future and apply for that.
Am I the only person with a blank screen?
Well, I don't know. Everyone's.
I have a blank screen too.
I'm seeing it fine.
I have a blank screen now.
Let me stop sharing and try to reshare. Did that help trustee?
Yes.
Now I can do it. Thank you.
Yeah. So the next one is a grants manager. Um, so this person would be tasked with um, not only finding and applying for the grants, but helping to manage them and do the final reporting. Um, one of the benefits is, is what we've been up against lately is finding grants and it's, they come across our desk and are due in a month or doing a couple weeks. And so we're, we're obviously rushing them before you. And I know that's been a concern of the board. A grants manager has a bit more time to put their pulse on what's going on in the grants community where most of us are, are doing it um, as, as kind of a, a side gig is what I keep saying. And of course, like Chris has been incredibly successful in doing so, but it's definitely something that takes up quite a bit of his time. So you have an opportunity potentially to do a grants manager. Um, grants manager salaries, averages, these averages are pulled from Colorado. They do average somewhere between sixty five to seventy. Um, again, these are averages, doesn't mean that's what Netherlands needs to, to bring someone on at if this was a desire. Just to give you an idea though, that cost. Uh, one question trustee Taylor had asked is can these grants managers fund themselves? And it's kind of a yes, no answer. It's really going to be dependent on the grant structure. If the grant has the ability to add in a project management line item, um, and then of course, um, you know, there is of course a startup. So if a grant manager were to come on, they probably need about six months just to be able to, to get a better understanding of town's priorities before they could hit the ground running. Um, so I'm not sure it would be covered in its entirety, but there are opportunities for a grant manager to fund themselves partially. The next is a parks manager who would do kind of planning, organizing, directing, the maintenance and upkeep of all parks, trails, recreational facilities. Um, this is not just administrative, but also uh on the ground work. And really the feeling behind a parks manager is if town were to pull back Ned rink and mountain tennis and pickleball to be in-house, right now it's volunteer run. It was an in-house recreational facility that that position would oversee that along with all of the parks that we have in town. Um, so in terms of a funding, you've got the memberships that people pay for mountain rink, uh, for Ned rink and mountain tennis. You have the, the conservation trust fund and then also as grants were applied for, you could be looking to do the project management line item to help cover the cost of a parks manager. Um, if this were to be a position, the desire would be for parks to eventually become its own department, um, have its own budget and really work towards uh solidifying it in that way. And then the last one is a sustainability coordinator. So that's obviously Garrett right now. And so the, the thought would be to bring that person on full time to really manage and coordinate sustainability programs and initiatives. Uh, the opportunities to fund this person would be through the zero waste line item and public budget. And then again, as the person applied for grants, a project management line item. If there is an opportunity to still go for the Boulder County Sustainability Grant, and so uh, that's currently what funds um the majority of Garrett's pay. Uh, but if we go that route, the desire would be to do a match of fifteen thousand. Currently, we match three thousand seven hundred uh with five of that coming from Public Works. And this would really allow us to maximize on Garrett's time and he could work uh more than currently the ten hours he's working now. He could be more of a part-time employee and increase that amount of time, potentially doubling it. Uh, so those are the positions we're asking for feedback on. And of course, if there are others that come to mind, we'd love to explore those, but do you have any comments, thoughts?
I'll dive in here first. Uh, this is Chris. Um, I, I think, you know, well, ideally all of them, but that's not going to happen. Um, but in terms of trying to the place where a couple from now we call them, it's me that I would be to do the increased funding with the Boulder County grant for Garrett. Raise that to fifteen thousand so that we keep our sustainability corner because he has been doing an incredible job and doing, and getting grants. Kind of paying our, um, bringing money into the town that way. Um, but then the other option, the other of the three jobs, this grant person, that's one that, you know, a- after a year and coming on board could potentially be, you know, where we can bring in enough grants where we can start doing the other jobs, or we can have a funding to support the other positions. So that one's almost a self-funding position, which I thought was, uh, which is, which I thought would be a very good thing. My only question there is, do we think we have enough uh work for a grant specialist in the town, knowing to be or sort of time job that could be done as well?
Yeah, I absolutely think it could be a part-time. I think obviously with any part-time position, the recruitment becomes a little bit harder. Um, just because then it's a, it's a non-benefited position, but it is, I think all of these positions start out as part-time with the goal of moving them full-time, you know, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Um, the thing with the grants manager, a true grants manager really takes an assessment of kind of the landscape and gets to know what our projects are and tries to find the funding to the project versus maybe some, some grants that we've gone for where it's the project to the grant. And so in knowing what our priorities are and not only current, but, but big scale, you know, our kind of pipe dreams, they would be able to find the funding for those. And so um, but long answer is yes, I think you could part-time. I just would I, just taking into consideration the challenge of recruitment.
Yeah, this is uh Alan. I, I'm glad to hear that because I think uh, I agree that Garrett's done a phenomenal job on a, I think he's been working more than the ten hours. Uh, I'm fairly certain of that and he's brought in twenty-five thousand dollars in grants. And he negotiated another ten thousand dollars and rebates on the uh solarized project. So he really benefited the town by thirty-five thousand dollars, far beyond what he's being paid. And I think one thing he's proven is he knows how to get grants. And I'm, I'm sure he's probably worked with Chris to some degree on, on that. So I would, I would propose that, you know, we promote from within and perhaps give him a, more of a full-time position where he would do the sustainability job and the grant to go with it and then look at how having him fund, having him help us fund other things with other grants. And I think having the hat on of, excuse me, sustainability is a good idea because I think one thing Chris uh has done, Chris Pelter has done, has done a great job of getting grants that further our sustainability goals at the same time. And I think that's also what Garrett has been doing. And I think it would be a pretty good perspective to have where he could look at other areas, keep his sustainability hat on and get a, a pretty good idea of what other needs there are. And he's been working with the town for some time. So I think he would have a better running start than most people because he has become familiar with Netherlands and the kind of things that we've been working on in other departments. So that's something I'd put out there. I like the other ideas. Uh, the correspondent, you know, I think that to me as a job, we need to collaborate on with Boulder County and Ned Fire. I think, you know, our police department's done a phenomenal job of de-escalating uh a lot of crazy situations. And I, I think that we've all observed in the police bladder that probably ninety percent of what, what police do here and elsewhere is uh, deal with domestic disputes and drunkenness and fighting. But you know, I think we have a highly skilled police force that could collaborate with, you know, maybe an E M T and Ned Fire who has some behavioral training when needed. You know, my neighbor had a heart attack and there were five cars of, of support people here in short order, uh, Ned Fire, uh, the, the police from Netherlands and other people. So um, you know, there's a, there's already a great response team. And I think getting that co-responder capability is a, a good collaborative kind of thing we can do rather than trying to fund it ourselves. So I think that's something I like, I like us to look at. In terms of a parks manager, I think Jonathan Bumover had this great idea of trying to have a recreational district at some point. And uh, I think that's a great idea, but I think right now funding a parks person is getting the cart ahead of the horse, to use an old cliche. We have one real park, Chiquita. We have one where. We have one we're planning on uh, and the gateway, or whatever we're calling it, the uh shore. Uh, and we still need a lot more turf, real estate for someone to manage and maybe there's overlap with special events in that. I don't know. But anyway, those are my ideas and uh, but I think a lot of interesting possibilities.
Just on that parks, that parks manager position, I mean, so I uh, what falls under Netherlands Parks is actually a lot more than that as well. I mean, you've got like got the uh, the Glasby House, you've got uh Bryant House and things like that that Parks Manager could be involved in, not to mention trails, um, which are uh something that, you know, we're working on the Trails Master Plan right now, but have really nobody to implement that. So to me, Netherlands Parks are one of our main assets, and we're also talking about uh, kind of reabsorbing the administration of Ned Rink and the tennis courts and the skate park. All those are revenue generating potentials for the town, uh, especially when uh we think about partnering uh those those assets with the community center, kind of tying in those memberships. And so I think that not only would it be a great deal for a Parks Manager to do, but there's actually a huge opportunity to bring in additional revenue through town assets that are currently kind of laying in a kind of semi-dormant state, and the town hasn't really taken them on or taken responsibility for them. And it's really because we don't have the staff person to do it. And so I think uh, to to me, the the grants, the grants manager makes the most sense because a grants manager can fund a co-responder uh in the long term and not to mention the support that a grants manager would give to advisory boards. I know that uh, SAB has has Garrett, but you know, ProSAB has a lot of burnout from from applying and reapplying to grants year upon year, which is what you need to do to get grants. Right? It's not about applying and getting it the first time. It's about applying and reapplying and reapplying and communicating uh with with the grants, uh, the program managers on the other side. So I think we really desperately need somebody to do that. And I think the way that we're going to get most of our infrastructure projects done, most of our parks projects, uh, most major projects in town is going to be through grants. And without having somebody to manage that, it's it's proving to be extremely challenging. So to me, the grants manager makes the most sense. And I think that the next level down, uh, our town is basically a park. And uh, we we're not keeping it up the way that we could be, and we're not utilizing assets we have the way that we could be. And I think that uh, Parks Manager would be first step to doing that. And to me, that those would be the 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 two positions that I would fund. And I like the idea of increasing the sustainability coordinators uh hours by uh increasing the match. And so, you know, I think it would be great if we could do those three things. I think that would be the right balance.
I guess I'm gonna jump, kind of piggyback on what Eric has mentioned here on the Parks Manager. I'm hearing some really good thought and kind of debates going on and ideals here. Um. I I guess I have some questions about some of the logic, the passive logic folks are going down. I would definitely piggyback on what Eric said about the intent and the hope of Ned Rink in the tennis courts to be kind of encapsulated into town and to come back under the town's wing. And I would point out that Ned Rink, the Ned Skate Park has been sitting in disrepair for a very long time. And so I guess when I think about a town and its resources, when we're talking budget, I also have to think about the infrastructure that is already in place and go back to our comprehensive plan, our master plan, preserve what we have, do more with less. And so while the idea of a grant manager sounds good because we are struggling always to get grants, there's no guarantee that that grant manager can one get these grants. We don't really have currently the best event horizon to what are our pipe dreams, what is our long-term goals? We have a lot of irons in the fire, so to speak, that uh, the details have not really been dialed down to the point you could effectively hand that information to a grants manager to synthesize to actually go out and get the grants that we would need. I I can agree that increasing the sustainability coordinator uh, match is a good thing to keep Garrett in-house and to continue to build that relationship with him. I would question the logic of did he really bring thirty-five thousand to the town when those grants were specifically used for charging electric vehicles was one of those? So how many of the town citizens are you helping out versus how much of a benefit? So I guess I look at a everything we do in government as through a utilitarian philosophy. And that is not always my personal philosophy, but I believe as a government, we are trying to do the best and create the most opportunity for the greatest number of individuals. And when you look at the average salary costs of those three positions, the one that comes in the lowest, just based upon who we're looking around in our region as well as nationally, is a parks and rec manager. As Eric pointed out, we basically are a park. Uh, we have flatland and folks from the plains come up every weekend. If you were around town last weekend, you could notice the massive congestion as well as the massive amount of people and without a functional park management plan and one person kind of rallying and having control and working with all the various different aspects, we are letting a lot of money kind of out the barn door, so to speak. And if Ned Rink this last two years has been able to bring up enough income just being their own nonprofit, not only to hire a marketing specialist and a rink manager, you actually pay for the production of ice, but they've also managed to have enough money to hire a website service to do the reservations that was necessary in order for them to meet the the standards during the pandemic, and they made a profit. So right there, just getting Ned Rink and the tennis courts, you could pay for over half of that salary. And you would have the ability to then have a town staff member to continue to support the infrastructure of our Netherlands Skate Park and to then partner and work with Teens Inc. And then partner with Teens Inc. on additional grants for our parks and for programming. Now, Alan, I do appreciate you remembering the idea of a rec district, but there there is a rec department, which is municipal-based, run by the town. And there is a rec district, and I was pursuing the rec district until basically all the other entities that would need to partner with us had communicated with me. We do not have a strong enough vision or cohesion across that outline district to really go for that yet. So on a town staff level, it was always recommended, we would rather seek a rec department and seek to raise a mill levy in order to fund that. I think right now we have the opportunity with this position to hire a town staff member to start bringing all of the various park infrastructure that we have from the tennis rink to the skate park to Japita to Gersio Field under one silo so that it's not so spread out. And another way of looking at this is now if Ned Fest is being brought back or Frozen Dead Guys is negotiating their use of Gersio Ball Field, it's no longer on ProSAB and Miranda and other town staff to deal with that. It's on the Parks and Rec Manager, thereby opening up the bandwidth of Miranda, Town Administrators and other town staff, Chris Pelterier, to continue to focus on their more narrow-focused line. And it allows us to bring in income from already existing infrastructure. Whereas with, while all the other ideas are great, they're essentially starting something from scratch. Whereas the only thing lacking in the parks realm right now is a head. And for it to all be under one silo instead of some of it falling under public works, and then the rental of Japita and Gersio Ball Field falling under administrative contracts with our current town administrator, or maybe eventually a town clerk. So when we look at the cost benefit analysis for the entire community, infrastructure and goal-wise, I believe that the Parks Manager comes out substantially on top because there are, there is already proven books and revenue that would fund if we got Ned Rink more than half that salary. And then with GOCO Grants, with Parks and Recreation Grants, having that actually be my degree, it might not be where I currently work as a profession, but that was my degree, that was my schooling. There is ample amounts of opportunity and half the grants you can get for Parks and Rec fund the time that that staff member is putting into that development of Parks and Rec programs. So I would argue that just from a cost benefit analysis, looking at the salaries, the average salaries, how much revenue such a position could bring in and who it benefits, as well as what infrastructure that currently exists that is in kind of a dwindling state of disrepair, that is the biggest bang for the buck we could possibly get by hiring one full-time staff member. And I think second to that would actually be Garrett and increasing that funding because then over the next year, he can help us to align our overall goals. And we can move our event horizon from two to three years outward of ten to fifteen. And once we have solid agreed-upon goals, ten to fifteen years out, then we have the capacity to bring in a grants manager who can actually really get to know that playing field and really have an eye out for the exact grants we need. But currently, I feel like if we hired a grants manager, it wouldn't be much different from how grants come before us currently, just because there is not enough cohesion in our vision as a town, and there's too many contradicting goals that we have not as a board found in a way to bring into a symbiotic alignment where they actually help each other instead of crossing, crossing lines and kind of contradicting one another and creating problems for another goal. We we tend to tie our feet. And I think the only place where we're not going to potentially tie our feet is in hiring a Parks Manager because it's a known need and we have existing infrastructure that is in a state of disrepair because we do not have.
It's my pro temp on hover. So I'm starting to think that maybe there's an alignment for Parks and Sustainability Coordinator to pursue those a little further. But if I'm misguided or there's other thoughts, trustee Danforth, trustee Corverlin?
Uh, yeah, I want to agree with Jonathan that the parks is actually one of the most important positions that we should fill. Um, most communities that are enjoyable to visit have a really well-organized Parks Department. So um, but I do think we need a part-time grants helper. I think, I mean, I think that it's just we need it. Uh, you guys are getting stuff on your desk a week before it's due, and we need to have somebody who could organize them, bring them before and prioritize things with more time to discuss. Um, and I would just keep Garrett's job as part-time as it's been and hope that the grant manager can come up with money to hire the um, what was the word? The for the other one, though.
The co-responder. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. I I think that's a great job, too. Um, and if there's a way to do all four of them part-time, I'd be fine with that. Yeah, you know, because I do think a lot of these could be part-time and still serve us. But that that's my opinion. I think definitely we need grants, definitely we need the park, and and we shouldn't eliminate sustainability. I don't think we need to increase it.
Okay. Trustee Danforth. Trustee Taylor.
I I agree with Tanya. I think um, you know, having somebody to cover parks is great. Um, and grants are so important for the functioning of a small town to make up, you know, for the fact that we don't have a whole lot of money to begin with. Um, so I'd love to see somebody helping with that.
And I know, yeah, trustee Taylor, if you wanted to go ahead, I know we talked last time, too.
No, I was just, I said most of what I was going to say last, at the last meeting. And I I I I think that we're going along the right track. I I mean, I could tweak some comments here or there, but there's nothing significant that that differs with my view on this. I I think a little further discussion and we'll have something.
So I think what I'd like to do then is come back to the board with, and make sure I'm on track here, a part-time grant manager and what that might look like. The Parks Manager, um, and I think there is some argument that that would need to be full-time, just given the possible add-in of new assets uh or bringing those assets back internally, and then an increase in the match for the Sustainability Coordinator. Seems if I'm capturing that correctly, that's the focus of the board? Does anyone strongly disagree with that assessment?
No, that seems right. I have a question. Would the uh parks position then, would they be kind of like looking at grants for themselves as part of their job as well? Or would that just all on the grant person?
I think so. I think if we had a grants manager part-time, we'd really need to look at their scope and is their scope maybe such finding and securing the grants, and then it's up to the department heads to execute, or or what that might look like, or is it more of like partnership?
Oh, that makes sense. It's a hard time, and then they could, yeah.
Right. Yeah, and like pass that off. I think there's a possibility.
And then, yeah.
Okay. And I think that's where we've struggled is really like the the front end, you know, I I think we're really lucky that things do cross our desk, but you're absolutely right, trustee Corverlin. It's often coming just so last minute. And and some of that is just the grant landscape, that's just how that works. But if the person kind of had a pulse on what was going on, um, you know, Chris has a great relationship with DOLA, but you know, Colorado Creative Industries and and some other grant funding opportunities, establishing those relationships so we know early on what might be coming forward as a funding opportunity, so we know if it could fit any of our our projects.
Yeah, I will say, my my, I mean, as I said, my preference would be to have a full-time grants manager, a full-time Parks and Rec manager slash director and to increase the Sustainability Coordinator match. I mean, those, I think if there's a way that we can do all three, I think that would be the best way to go. I I am slightly, I have some slight concerns about the idea of a part-time grant writer, just in that, uh, I it seems it seems like that might be more of a waste of money than a full-time grant writer. And I'm, I I just would need to kind of see maybe some numbers on what what what's possible there and how much they would be able to work. And and I guess what I wonder is if it's possible to roll in other administrative deficiencies that uh you might feel Town Hall has, Miranda, uh, into the grants manager role. And it kind of extend it to be maybe like a grants and project manager type role um, that would justify a full-time position uh for 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 trustees who are not, who are not convinced that it should be full-time. I'm just want to want to be on record, I think it should be a full-time position for the town. I don't think that our own revenues are ever going to get us to where we need to go in terms of uh really massive uh capital improvements and uh infrastructure improvements and all those sorts of things. And I think that we're going to rely heavily on grants. And that having somebody who is dedicated to to securing that money for the town would be invaluable, but I can see how there might be long lulls uh in that person's position if they were full-time. And so I just wonder if it could be uh filled out by taking on additional administrative responsibilities that might
Sure.
you might need.
Yeah, and I think we could talk about that at the next department head meeting to see um, how people people's thoughts are, uh, department head's thoughts are on that. Uh, so we'll come back with with kind of a combination of either full-time, part-time, but really I think the emphasis will be on exploring these three positions to start and then keeping an eye on that um peace officer, mental health grant. Uh, and hopefully maybe in the future sheriff, the sheriff's office, letting that co-responder. Um, and we'll keep working on that kind of a, under a different realm, maybe the grant funding arm.
Yeah, and I just want Amanda to know, because I see she's on the call, that um that I think these co-responder programs are so important for, you know, kind of transforming policing going forward. And I I'm hugely supportive of it, but I but I believe that we can find that money uh in other ways and through other partnerships rather than simply allocating uh our temporary uh rescue funds to that for for a limited amount of time.
Miranda, this is trustee Taylor. I I'm wondering if if any so I'm I'm not directing this direct at you, Miranda. I think I'm directing at everybody here. What what are the gaps in trustee App's proposal that perhaps the Sustainability Coordinator and Grant Writer could be fused into a single job? A grant, a grant, um, a person responsible for obtaining grants, but with an eye toward maintaining uh assuring that these are sustainable as well? Uh, we would have to ask Garrett, of course, if he was interested in a job like that. But if Garrett were interested in a job like that, do we believe Garrett could handle both of those roles together? Or or am I missing an important gap here?
I think I think so. Two, two, I guess, pieces. If we were to bring on a sustainability coordinator, first we would have to open it. And so why, well, definitely getting Garrett's feedback would be important. we'd still have to, uh, recruit for it. But I think the concern was a little bit that grants is everybody's part-time job. Um, it's not just, you know, I think every department head, that's really an expectation is to, to keep an eye on grants. And so they often, I think, do get lost in the shuffle of the day-to-day. And so if combined, which is definitely a feasible option, structuring the Sustainability Coordinator's job description in a way in which it's not this like rushed, oh, here, this came across my desk. It's really, it's, there's a concerted effort. And my, I think the only fear maybe I have is that just because of how much town staff end up having to do, there's never enough time to focus on grants.
Uh, so you're, you're, so I think, I think I don't have a complete understanding of how much of Garrett's time is spent, uh, doing, uh, doing research into grants. Certainly he does that to some degree, but if, if that is a small part of his job only, then, uh, I understand why a separate grant coordinator would be required. But if grants is a big chunk of his job and he has a feel for doing that job well, it, it does seem, uh, does seem that it would be possible to merge those functions and get full value from both. But just, that's just a thought.
Absolutely. We can bring that back as, as an option too, to consider and what that might look like.
I'd just like to chime in that, you know, since I'm liaison with the Sustainability Advisory Board, I can tell you that almost every month, uh, he has brought forward grant opportunities. It's something he really has his ear to the ground. And he hasn't always gotten the grants, but he is very attuned to the possibilities and obviously has the skills to do it. I guess I would, I would, uh, say that having the charger in town is going to be a plus going forward, maybe not right now. But I think as the state tries to electrify, uh, you know, that will help us both with tourists as well as locals. And so I think it was a coup to get that. And so he has been working, uh, I think a significant part of his job has been looking for grants and applying for grants. Uh, and in particular, uh, in the waste diversion area where we have a long way to go if we're going to make our goals there. And that's been a stated goal of the BOT for several boards.
Yeah, I think, so I'll come back with that combination. I think one thing to consider with that combination is just your qualifications. You're then looking for someone who of course meets the sustainability desires, however that is written out. And then also someone with a grants writer experience. I'm very confident that, that people who service Sustainability Coordinators do have both skill sets, because, um, using Garrett, for example, he really has done a great job of securing those grants. Um, it, it could be a unique blend. And so I'd be curious in talking with CML too, how often employees can, can kind of meet that hybrid?
Yeah. I'm sorry. I was just going to say that the advantage we have of this is we're paying this coordinator sixty-five thousand a year. Uh, that coordinator has to bring in at least sixty-five thousand dollars a year in grants, or we can determine that that's not a viable position. So it may be a year of, of kind of, uh, testing to see if that looks like a possibility. Hopefully this person will bring in far more than sixty-five thousand a year. But those are numbers we can compare in order to determine if this role is functioning effectively for the town.
Uh huh.
Right. I mean, there's every potential that you could get one grant that would, you know, be over a million dollars that would cover that sixty-five thousand dollars from that perspective quite easily. Um, so it seems like having a grant writer work with somebody like Garrett as a Sustainability Coordinator would be an extremely powerful combination. Similarly, working with a Parks Manager, similarly, similarly, working with a Public Works Director. Um, there just seems to be a kind of a multiplier effect that could happen, uh, if that position were to be crafted properly and filled with the right person. And I would also say that someone who has the track record of bringing in the amount of money that we would hope this person would bring in, would likely demand a significant salary. And so I do think we have to think about that as well. And I just, from a process perspective, nothing on Garrett whatsoever, but I think that we should avoid as much as possible the pitfalls and dangers of crafting, uh, jobs for people, rather than crafting a job that's actually needed by the town and filling that appropriately, uh, rather than just looking at the people that we have and making jobs based on their skill sets. I ju- just in general, I think we should avoid that, which I think is a pitfall. I don't think it's sustainable long-term.
I would piggyback on that and I agree with you fully on that, um, Trustee Comes and Smell. And I guess my one other question here, when we're looking, it sounds like a lot what needs to happen is for department heads to sit down and get a little bit more a grasp on the exact scope that these positions would be. And then I guess the one question I would have of town staff is if we hire a grants manager that is going to be kind of having their hands in all of these departments, that involves a lot of communication and coordination with those department heads. And so then we also have to consider that the amount of staff time that would be going into those meetings, how much more bandwidth would we actually be opening up for Miranda, for Chris P., for Dawn? Or for a potential Parks Manager? If they're still having to sit in these meetings and bring that grants manager kind of up to speed, so to speak, on all the knowledge that they have, which for a lot of our department heads is somewhat tacit and would take, uh, ample amount of time from those department heads to actually be able to write out and provide the right information and stay in coordination with that grant manager for it to actually have that dup- dup- you know, duplicating effect we're looking for. Um, I have a question in my mind, not so much about how helpful the grant manager would be, but how much time and bandwidth would it really actually open up for other department heads, considering that they would still have to be deeply involved in that process? And in weekly, at least bi-weekly, if not weekly, meetings with that individual? So I guess that's where I push for the Parks, the Parks Manager, because it's a pretty set position. It's been needed for ten years. There's potential assets, potential revenue that could offset that cost out of our budget. And then Garrett has shown, I, I would agree fully, he has shown a lot of aptitude and he has really dived in on a personal level to our missions, our sustainability goals, and really brought a lot of benefit to the table. So personally, I'm a little bit hesitant toward getting a grant manager still, just because I don't think as a town, we have that information in a readily available, uh, way to share. I believe it would still take a lot of time off of our department heads to either write that into management plans or basically document all of their personal tacit knowledge and their institutional knowledge, which that is going to require a lot of their time. And then we're basically doubling down on this grant situation without any guarantee that we're going to be getting it. And while I acknowledge as a small town, we will never have the revenue to fund our needs, I would really like as a board to see us move away from the idea of funding so many things by grants, because grants come with design dictates. And those design dictates are not always in alignment with citizen goals or our comprehensive plan or our master plan. And then we find ourselves in a position of taking the funding over the ideals of our citizens who we are actually supposed to be representing. So I would say for this year, I would be way more comfortable moving away from the grant manager, getting a good understanding of what the scope of that individual would be, and then having department heads take the time to document all of their institutional knowledge, so that when we went for a grant manager, that individual could come in and have all that information readily available to them without having to pull bandwidth off of our department heads, so that their time was the most effective it could be. Um, that's just kind of my thoughts with that.
So I think what I'd like to do though is, is still bring back, you know, there's a few combinations here. You know, grants manager, part-time, full-time, combination, grant Sustainability Coordinator, parks obviously on its own. I'd like to just bring back kind of a, an overview of all those different options and then, uh, continue this at a future, it would be during a board meeting, continue this discussion, but obviously give you way more information on what this could feasibly look like. And then also as it ties into the budget.
Um, Miranda, I have a thought on, on grant management. Um, one thought I had is that it's grant, it's one thing to write a grant, but it takes a lot of follow-through and a lot of longevity to actually close the grant. And, um, and there are grants out there that, you know, Rita picked up. Nobody knows about. I think I might have been the only one that knows about from two thousand thirteen that still are closed. But I think it'd be, you know, you have to be really careful about going for every grant that you think you have an opportunity to get, because, um, closing it is actually ninety percent of the work. So, uh, I just wanted to put that out.
And I think that is one of the, the components to the full-time versus part-time is, is full-time. Um, typically those positions obviously are focused on not only securing but closing. They're the responsible party for closing it out. Um, whereas if, again, if part-time, it could be structured in a way of securing and/or closing or whatever that might look like. Um, but yeah, I'd like to just kind of bring back all this information. And then also now that we've narrowed it in a little bit more, talk with the department heads and get their feedback on the proposed positions and especially ones that cross over into their worlds, what that might look like, that collaboration. So thank you for this feedback. I appreciate it. Anything else about the positions? Okay. So next steps is that we will come back with the budget and details, uh, of the budget at the October nineteenth Board of Trustees meeting. That's where we'll also revisit the new positions conversation. We will have the budget posted for public review on Monday, October twenty-fifth. There will be a public hearing on Tuesday, November ninth at seven PM. Please take note that that's the second Tuesday of the month because of the election on the first Tuesday. The November meetings will need to be the second and third. Um, so then we'll, we'll also talk about the budget, the draft final budget at November sixteenth meeting with the goal of approving it on December seventh. Are there any other questions, comments, feedback for us, takeaways? Rita, anything else from you?
Yes. So, um, I, I will plan on sending you the detail, um, budget a few days before the October nineteenth meeting. And we would ask that if there are any questions, that, uh, you send them to Miranda or myself prior to the October nineteenth meeting, that would be preferred. That's it.
Rita, Miranda, thank you. Thank you for pulling us together. I think this led to a really good discussion tonight amongst the board. I think this was really productive.
Agreed. Thank you all. Anything else from the board?
Thank you.
We'll do this again in about three weeks.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Can't wait.
Thanks. Have a good evening.
Bye.